Yeah, ready.
All right. Agenda item 5C, discussion action from closed session.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow Bill to draft a proposal together about what was discussed in the closed session.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mitch, second by Josh. Discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? unanimous. Passed. All right, agenda item 5D, discussion action on village general legal services.
Yep, last month it was asked of me to inquire of both Ashley and Wardman what their general village service fees would be, and both of them are at the same amount of $2.25.
Especially since Ashley's performing work, I would move to retain Ashley as our general legal service attorney.
Second.
Do we have Wardman?
Troy, and a second by Scott. A discussion?
Wardman's statement, though, I thought was one eighty, not two twenty-five.
No, I have Steve Zock, who is our new labor law attorney, came back at two twenty-five for Minnesota.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
I want to oppose. So it passes?
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5E, discussion action concerning village trustee Mary Scott behavior. So Shelley and I did meet with our attorney, Bill Cole, and I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I understand, our advice was one. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, things can be said, we can do nothing, or we can discuss answering Mary and pass a resolution regarding conduct not becoming of a board member. So I guess asking the board how you might want to pursue this or go forward with this, I can give my opinion if that helps. Mary speaks of transparency, and she was transparent, although she maybe just didn't intend to be. She advocated the library not to trust Shelley, honestly, reasons why the library board has issues with the village board. Mary didn't trust us, the village board, enough to express her feelings, how she feels about Shelley. She has not defended nor apologized for her email. But I don't see reasons per se to pursue this unless the rest of the board does, what is current is out in the open, per se is what it is.
So what wasn't done is that there was no background information, and I have a signed statement for Miles regarding the conversation he had with Shelley, in which he says that Shelley told him to remove the tentative sign from the front of the studio.
We're just discussing your email, we're not discussing anything.
But that was the background information that I tried to explain.
So you're explaining to us?
That I was trying to explain when everybody was yelling so loudly, and what I'm trying to say is, he says it was intended toward him and his studio when across the street from here.
No, Mary, we're talking about the oral email that you sent to everybody about what you said about Shelley.
And it's part of the policy of the library, part of the protocol that even James is aware of, because it happened in 2019.
What is part of?
That conversation with Shelley should have more than one person.
You told people to not trust her and bring a tape recorder in when they talk to her, that's what we're discussing.
And that is part of the protocol of the library that Gary can speak to.
If I'm not mistaken, the whole sign thing was just during the Easter egg hunt because it was a sponsorship.
And his signed statement says that the conversation with Shelley was to permanently remove the sign. So did anybody talk to Miles? Because that's why Miles was concerned, why he had to permanently remove the sign from the front of the studio, and then first of all.
There was no discussion of a permanent removal of his sign.
It was.
But that's what he's saying, so that was his understanding. So I'm basing this off of what Miles had said and informing the library.
So the library has policies to bring a tape recorder in when they talk to Shelley?
Yes. To have a recording device or more than one person.
Why wouldn't the rest of us inform to that?
Huh?
Why wouldn't the board inform to that?
As the trustee from 2019, I don't know who the ref was from there. I've come into this, and this has just always been.
So it's been the policy for that long?
It's been a protocol for that long, yes.
I don't think that everyone informed the board of that.
Isn't that a obligation to inform?
The people use the word "policy" exactly, the word "protocol."
Yeah. It was an obligation to inform people that you're recording the conversation.
And I didn't say anything about not informing anybody. This is based on their protocol that they have.
So that's your explanation for it.
That they have been.
Well, Kirsten, isn't she the director of the library? Wouldn't she know that?
I'm sorry, if I'm trying to talk and you're talking over me, we cannot hear.
Well, we don't need an explanation of things happening. We're discussing the conduct of the email. That's what we're discussing.
You are talking about conduct, and I'm giving you the background information. If you have the background information, the email makes total sense.
So you're saying Kirsten didn't know that?
Kirsten didn't know what?
You had to tell her to bring a tape recorder in?
No, 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 no. Just reminding that I recommend that we stick with the protocol, that we stick with that.
And what about the comment about being back into a corner, Mary? I'm going to ask the question, how do you feel like being back into a corner?
Because Shelley, you changed your statement, the emails have not been provided to the people here, and so where are the emails in this package? The email that you said that Gary can also vouch for makes it sound like you were just talking about the Easter egg hunt, which had already been discussed by the chamber and Miles, that it would be removed for that day. Miles' statement here, signed, says that you were telling him to permanently remove the sign, and that is why. And then further in your email, it's questioning whether or not he should remain a library employee if this conflict of interest is a problem. So that's also talking about his employment.
I pointed out to Gary that he should probably look at the handbook if he felt there was a conflict of interest of library employment and the business, because his email concern with the signage, after explaining I was talking to him about business, had nothing to do with library business. My business conversations with Miles had nothing to do with library. Nothing. And that was in the email chain.
Then you need to.
And I'm sure you are well aware that email chain as is addressed to the board.
The protocol should probably be that you have somebody with you then also when you're going to discuss things like this with him.
We're getting all omnibus, there is.
His signed statement says what he believes was talked about. So if you are going to discuss the rest of this stuff, this is the background information. If once again, you're going to poo-poo the background information. And as a trustee for the library board, I was recommending that we stick with the protocol, because it seemed like you were saying, I think we need to meet face to face, and that has happened before with the library board.
But the face to face was with Gary.
Let's meet face to face.
Wasn't with Miles. The face to face was with Gary, it wasn't Kirsten, it wasn't Miles.
Gary misunderstood my email, and I asked if we should meet to clarify.
So this is in regards to, so I appreciate the background. I read through the emails that were sent out sporadically, and so I have bits and pieces, I appreciate you filling that in. The concern I have, regardless of what the topic is at hand, is that you have constantly said that we need to include all village board members in our communication.
Openness.
Openness. What I saw was not openness. What I saw was you directly trying to send an email to a person, from what I can see from this email chain that I had, was not even included in the email chain.
The library director is always included. She's the one who is not walking.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me. Thank you. What I saw in that email chain, from what you and Shelley both sent, I went back and looked through that email chain, Kirsten was not on that email chain. I did not know Kirsten existed until you tried to email her and directly tell her to be careful. I don't want to quote what you said in there, we can go back and quote, but what was said was said, and it was in regards to how to interact with each other. And if we're supposed to be open and have an engaging community and conversations, saying things like that is not going to promote that, it's going to do the opposite of that, and it's going to bring us to the point here where we have to decide what kind of actions we have to take based off of something that was said, whether it was following policy or not, it was still the fact that you're sending it to a single person, and it got sent to a wrong person, and it now caused conversations to happen that weren't recorded, or conversations to have that may or may not have happened, and it's brought a lot of doubt and uncertainty into it. So it plays onto your credibility about what you say and what you do, because you're telling everyone, you've told everyone on this board multiple times that whenever we send an email or we have a conversation, we have to include the entire board. And then you did the exact opposite of that. Like, I've been trying to be on your side through the library, through the whole thing, I'll be open and honest about that, I've been trying to, you know, keep, curtail some of the conversations as best I can, because yes, they have been getting out of hand. It's recorded, you know, they've been getting out of hand. But if you can't honor and show, you can't do what you speak, you know, if you can't walk the walk, then, you know, you don't have that credibility, you lose that credibility.
Well, I can explain what you're talking about. Dual role trusteeship means that when I am working as a trustee for the library board, the business at hand is that, and I'm recommending things not as a proxy from the village, but as my own trustee. So I'm fully library board and I'm fully village board. And we always go through Kirsten, which, that is the filter so that there aren't walking quorums. Kirsten is the acting library director. All emails go to her. So the fact that you didn't know about Kirsten, she's been mentioned in the reports as the acting library director. All emails go to her, she sends them out from there, just like our emails should go to Shelley and sends them out from there, so that we don't have walking quorums and we don't have trustees responding to each other. So based on how Miles felt he was treated, his written statement of how he felt when he was told to remove that sign. And what he felt that turned to the conversation were, if Shelley feels that it was one way, but Miles feels that it was another, it's another example of the conversation while he was punched in as a library employee should not have happened without the library president.
You're deflecting, the discussion is about your actions.
But the emails may spend based on the fact that once again, the village board.
But it goes against what you say. You say about being open, so fine, so every communication has to go through the library board.
Right.
Well, that's the same thing that we're saying here, every communication has to go through the village board. But you didn't send it to the entire library board, you sent it to one person on that library board.
Which is how our emails are supposed to be sent. They get sent through Kirsten, Kirsten then sends them forwards.
That wasn't happening at all in that email chain, though.
Well, I can't, I don't know at what point she sent it to.
I never got anything from Kirsten. I only got it from you and Shelley.
Kirsten sends it to the library board. In the library board, if they have a conversation, then Gary then responded to Shelley. Shelley should then have sent communications to the village board.
I think that's the problem right there. I mean, you know, we're chasing our tails trying to communicate with each other.
The system's not working.
The other thing is, your first and foremost is a representative of this board to the library, so.
It's a dual trustee.
I understand, but we appointed you to that position to represent us and to keep us informed.
Right.
The hiding behind that is not open, I'm sorry.
It's not hiding behind it. It is sticking with a protocol that's in place, because a library employee was feeling sectioned out, and then he was feeling, when he went in there for non-related, he was feeling sectioned out. His signed statement shows how he felt.
Maybe the library employee shouldn't be in there on library time.
Mary, how do I as an employee not feel sectioned out by what you have done? You have shown no support of this village staff.
That is not true, and you always include the entire village staff in your woes, and that's not fair to the rest of the village staff.
We are a team, and we all work together here.
You cannot include the other village staff with what you told Miles, what you said to Miles.
I am village staff. Where is your support of village staff?
I say thank you every meeting that you attend.
You don't come in and say hello.
Huh?
You don't come in and say hello.
I think it's time to move on.
I don't come in and say hello. Who do you guys say hello at the office? Every time I come in and say hello.
Alright, so I have a discussion action on village core plan, Amanda updates, and resolution 2021-1.
Alright, in your package, you have, you should have the parks and open space plan. The parks committee has gone through this. We have made updates to revise the years on this. This core plan was something that we've had for many years. It's usually like a five-year capital plan for our park system. It needed to be updated, and also includes language for our multi-use trail system. We're trying to get through this village with dates and projects that were already completed, those have changed throughout here. I've added a park system map in our open meetings that were part of going through this, and our survey that was done by economic development that pertained to our park services has been added in as well. The core plan is important as grants are dependent on this plan for obtaining them. Riverland Conservancy is anxious to use our core plan on a grant that's come available for our area, and I'm asking for passage and a resolution and adopt the updates to this. I said parks has already gone through this once already?
Parks, any comments?
No, we went through it, and do you have any comments we had to Shelley, so?
Okay, alright.
Can you repeat that? You went through it in one?
Do you have any comments that we had to Shelley?
And the comments are included in here?
Yes.
Alright, I move to approve the core plan that's presented with resolution 2021-1.
I'll second it.
Motion by Troy, second by Mitch. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So it passes one name. Agenda item 5G, discussion action on ATV/UTV ordinance amendments.
Alright.
Who did you start up there, Shelley?
Yeah, okay, so the ATV/UTV ordinance has been amended. This has gone through both police and even public works, and the amendments came as a result of trying to get some signage into the village, and we found, and Matt, you may have to interject here on some of this, that our ordinances needed to include language that would help support the signage for DOT standards. Is that all? Okay. And then on the police side, we needed a little bit more enforcement language to help them take care of that business on their end as well. So everything's done through several committees, and Dean Colley, Sheriff's Department deputies have also taken a look, the May deputies that do trail enforcement have also reviewed this, and everybody seems to be good to go. So it was before you.
Mitch, about the course? I'll make a motion to approve it.
The only thing I had was the roads defined seemed a little terrible then.
Or is that Matt?
I'm sorry, on the back of the first page. It has US intersection in between the intersection of Center Street and Nicole Court. Center Street and Nicole Court don't touch, don't intersect at all. And then we have KP Madison Street between Williams Way and Blue Mounds is actually great. Seventy-eight to and between Nicole Court, I'm guessing that should be seventy-eight from Highway fourteen to Nicole Court. At this time, if we get an extension to Red Hawk, everybody's going to want to change the ordinance, but.
I think, actually, looking at it, I think the KP and Madison Street between Williams Way and Blue Mounds should be village limit to village limit, and not the street, because of people that pass Blue Mounds Street the other day, like handle them, right? So. So you're saying take three B and make it from the signs? Yeah, from the sign to sign, but it'd be village limit to village limit, right? And then what on eight was the change?
Nicole Court and Center Street don't meet, right?
Do they?
No.
That'd be, that'd be Mill Street and Nicole Court. So.
So basically.
But Mill Street seven D.
Yeah, but it has to end at Nicole, right?
Yeah, except for last street.
Well, the end, yeah, it really don't extend to the twenty.
Right, yeah.
Right, seventy-eight is.
So from my understanding, we were going to do all village streets except US Highway fourteen, and unfortunately, Red Hawk subdivision's landlocked right now. So just as far as when I have to order signs, I just want to make sure, what are we going to put up signs at this time?
Why are we doing seventy, why is seventy-eight included?
It is, but when you hit Red Hawk, or sorry, when you hit Nicole Court, it changes speed limit to forty-five, and DOT does not allow anything above thirty-five at this time.
And it takes DOT to change that speed limit.
And we've already, we've tried to vary it to the right, so basically at this point, it's just continue to try.
At this point, we continue to see, as we had stated before, if we can maybe get that speed limit lower, hopefully at some point, as that subdivision keeps filling up.
The more residents complain to DOT might help, too.
So that's what it is.
What do you think, that what it is, is to send letters to DOT, or is it letters that matters? It could letters the, I mean, what's the.
I was not DOT, right?
What's that, sorry?
Send letters to DOT?
Yes.
That would be that.
Yeah.
And then the time, we talked about it the first time, and first time around, I said we should modify the ordinances before we pass it, so I'm glad to see that we're coming back and doing ordinances, but the time of nine o'clock was a concern to me back then, and we had three people that said no, and three people that said yes, and then a fourth that said yes. So I'm wondering, should we modify that time from nine o'clock to an earlier time? Most of the year, it fairly starts by nine o'clock, and I think an earlier time would be better. I was thinking eight o'clock?
Summer time is light till nine.
Sure, but then our summer starts, like Mezzos, you're off on nine o'clock.
Yep, so Mezzo sign says all village of Mezomani streets are ATV routes except Highway fourteen, seven AM to nine PM only.
But we could still do our own.
Yeah, I believe Cross Plains is seven to eight PM, but same thing, they forwarded it down, all fourteen was excluded.
I'm wondering if we could just change it one hour earlier, so we don't have that noise that late? And for a short period of time when the sun is out until nine, the majority of the year would be in the dark.
Yeah, but you can't set it per season.
That's my family, change it to eight. It accounts for a bigger chunk of the calendar year.
And I guess we already voted on it, I don't want to.
Already voted.
Four, three, I mean, we can, we're good again, I guess, we want to vote again, but otherwise, we already voted four, three.
Well, we're, aren't we?
Is there consensus, anybody else interested in changing to eight?
I think the motion would be that we have this redone so that everything is written properly, so I'd like to make a motion that we send it back to have the corrections that public works that Matt suggested, and that we change the time to eight o'clock for safety.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Alright, can I second to the motion?
No. I'd like to make a motion that we change the language in E to state village limit to village limit, and in A, intersection of Center Street, and it doesn't have to go to Nicole Court, so they can cross by quick trip, I believe, and pass the rest as is.
I'll second.
A motion by Mitch to modify, second by Josh, discussion on that, on the modification.
If we go limit to limit to that, resolve our issue with the Red Hawk?
No, KP, that was just KP.
Yeah, KP, he's last week.
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay.
And then we just still send the letters, DOT still fly for variance, it's going to handle.
So technically, Red Hawk owners can close around their subdivision, it's not all they can do right now, so.
But there's no connector for what we did earlier?
Yeah, at this time, so they can still legally use ATV routes, or they can use Red Hawk, which is just, they can't go out on.
I'm going to get out of the yard, it goes down to your house.
Well, I don't know if that passes or not.
We don't know how much land we have, but.
I was talking about Kyle.
We have the path.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Well, opposed, the motion passes. Agenda item six, reports, Vanzar Commission. Troy, last meeting was Tuesday, March sixteenth. The intent was to meet the new lineman apprentice top candidate. Because of weather in Colorado, flights were canceled, candidate did not make it in time. One member of the crew, John, retires May seventh. Since then, this candidate has started. Financials and superdents report were provided, nothing, nothing of too much interest for the rest of the board. Next meeting is Tuesday, May eighteenth at six thirty PM.
One correction, and Scott, I called you on this, it was to your response, or your questionnaire that was in the paper? And I'm believing it was a typo, but when you mentioned about the substation in the paper, it was fifteen million dollars. One point five million dollars, just so everybody's aware of that, because.
You put fifteen million in?
Fifteen million, so that's why, I called you unless you messaged, because I was like, well, it's one of those things that someone sees that, it's going to be, you know, it's one point five, was kind of the maximum estimate there, so just a correction on that as well. I mean, or no.
You want me to get in touch with Joe?
It doesn't matter, I'm just letting you know that it was in there.
I didn't, I don't.
Anybody out here?
I don't read the papers, so.
But.
I can get in touch with him.
The fact that we got that report, it was not fifteen million dollars, you know.
I believe Sean is here, is Sean online at all?
No.
Alright. Six B, Black Earth Fire District, Mary?
Um, yeah, so we met, and they, the chief again is Dan Mahadka, and the roofer did not put a roof, or did not come, has not shown up since we talked, they put a roof on the fire department yet, so they're getting back in touch with millers to see what their plan is for when they're going to start. They said as soon as there was fair weather, and they gave us an assignment that before the next meeting, we need to present our driveway ordinance. There is concern amongst the fire crews, the chief, of course, officers, that some driveways are not accessible, and I'm sure that they're mostly talking about our rural areas, but we're all supposed to bring a copy of ordinance with us.
Next meeting, Mary?
And the next meeting is, I'll have to get back to you on that, I'm not actually a hundred percent sure, it's May eleventh.
Anything else from Mary?
Yeah, May eleventh.
Okay, thank you.
Six C, Dean Iwo, Troy, last meeting was Thursday, March eighteenth. There was a secretary position open, it was filled, and then candidate left the commission, so it's now open, but that will not be filled until, until the board, there's board organizations, so that'll be filled the next possible meeting. There was final true-up and audit discussions. Black Earth True-Up will be receiving around seventy-one thousand per se. Next meeting is this week, Thursday, April fifteenth at six thirty.
Six D, EDC, last meeting was Monday, March twenty-second. Wasn't much discussion on the Black Earth School, we discussed that tonight. Committee did approve communications, communication in the newsletter to the public regarding the survey results and certain steps, actions that will be taken regarding, regarding the surveys, if that makes sense, describe that. So we like to give feedback to the public, public, fill out the survey, we like to keep them informed on, hey, we listened, and here's things we're doing to address the concerns that you brought up. We did a lot of work on the comprehensive plan, insert some updates. Next meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-eighth at six PM.
All right, emergency management didn't meet, um, we're still waiting for the county, but they're back in gear now, right?
Yeah, they are starting to work on.
And so, after the reorganization, we'll set a meeting for that.
EMS, Jared?
Uh, we have not met, we're still tentatively scheduled for May fourteenth.
Six G Library, Mary?
Friends of the library, um, they were not present at the venue, so we didn't have any updates on that. Um, the treasury support, everything fine, actin' on bills, everything fine. Uh, we did the twenty-twenty-one adjacent county reimbursement request, that went through just fine. Um, the library director position, everybody is excited about this, um, change. Um, we have hired a library director, her name is Bailey Anderson, and she starts May third, um, prior to that. And just informing the public of that change, since, um, as of this agenda, we did not know that. So, we were talking about confirming the li- the timeline, extending the, um, acting director's end date, which is still in effect. Bailey couldn't start until May third, so we're extending, um, person's end date so that she can cover and then do overlapping weeks on training with Bailey to get her acquainted.
Mary, did you say that there was a date or not?
May third?
Uh, for.
When she starts?
For a person's extension.
Until May seventh, the end of that.
May seventh, yeah, sorry, thank you.
Uh-huh. And, um, orientation and training for the library directors, that would cover that, and that would get the night. And the next meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-first at seven PM.
Kirsten, would you like to add anything? She's not here, is she online, anything?
No, no.
Um, all right.
Carrie?
She had some questions for the board. So, in the hiring, Mary, you were part of the hiring process, and there was, Kirsten had, um, questions. Um, looks like, Mary, you're looking for reimbursement for meetings during, for, um, interviews, working on interview process and hiring?
Oh, I just had her send the dates that we attended, just 'cause they weren't on the calendar, so I don't know if those get reimbursed or not, I don't know. I just, there was, I think we attended eight meetings in three weeks, so I had her send that. But reimbursement for anything other than regular meetings?
I'm not sure, so we do, I don't know, like, if we.
It's board approval.
Yeah. Has the library board approved it?
Reproved what?
Those.
Those meetings are paid, as paid.
Library board doesn't pay you for those meetings? No.
No, but.
But the village board, by our ordinance, can approve them. We haven't been in this situation before for those extra meetings, so the board needs to approve whether to pay them for those extra meetings.
But it says the library board also has to approve.
Authorized.
Right? Both boards, yeah.
How do we?
Yeah.
Uh, it's authorized by the library board and the municipal government on.
Right. Were these meetings posted? They were all posted?
Yeah, they were on the library.
Was it full library board?
No, it was the subcommittee for hiring, right?
No, there's no subcommittee for hiring. No, it's the full library board. The full library board met and closed session, um, and also, well, so we could sum of it during a regular meeting and then closed session for all the other business. Yeah, there was one more, we just had one, let's do that.
Well, they're posted meetings, they're posted meetings, right?
Well, the subcommittees reported meetings, too.
But I understand, does the subcommittee meetings or regular board meetings?
They were regular board meetings, and the subcommittees haven't met until the new library director gets in place. I reported that some months ago, the subcommittees won't meet until the new library director is up in line. So, that should be, if you had a meeting.
So, okay.
Yeah.
I don't get any copies of the stuff, so I don't know what I'm getting paid for, when I'm not, I just get a check. So, maybe in the future, we could break our stuff down into what we're being paid for, and then if there was that problem, I would, now that the subcommittees aren't paid for, but they aren't.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we go ahead and pay for those pending approval of the library board.
Yeah, I would just know it's not on your agenda.
It's not on the.
It's not on the agenda?
No, that was just a question, I thought Kirsten would be part of this.
It's part of the invoice.
It's part of the invoice portion of the, yeah. So, we could wait till that portion to make the motion, I guess, it doesn't.
If they're, if they're board, if they're library board meetings. Yep.
They are full library board meetings. One library.
I'll wait till the financials to make that motion.
All right, uh, six H, Public Works Committee, Mitch?
Yeah, so, we've actually met twice because the board meeting was postponed. Uh, we met on, uh, March, uh, March seventeenth was one of them, and the other one was April twelfth. A lot of the same things, we were discussing sidewalk repairs, um, the creek with the DNR. We discussed, uh, yield signs at Blue Mountains and Canal Street, uh, per police's request. Discussed trees, ash trees, um, discussed, uh, garbage hydrant painting and gut pricing. It was a creek issue. We also discussed, uh, sewer water connection for Caminae Lot, which we really kind of just left at this point for further, Matt's gonna do some further legwork on that. We also discussed fluoride treatment. Some municipalities are going away from putting fluoride in the water, and some aren't. And we decided that we create a survey monkey and put a questionnaire out with the Village Newsletter to get the information out to the people and let the people kind of decide with the survey, and then we can decide if we're, we'll vote one way or the other, go to referendum, if we're gonna keep it or get rid of it. So, that's kind of where we left that. You were doing CPR training?
Today.
Today?
Good.
And about it?
Yeah, basically, Mitch's got everything covered. Uh, I did do last Friday a punch list with Matt from Town and Country on Clary Street. There's some concrete repairs, some, some other items. Tentatively, first week of May is when we would hopefully be looking at pavement down there, pending weather, temps, you know, stuff like that. Before we get those issues addressed and get that street completed. But Mitch has got everything pretty much covered. Um, the only other thing would be, did open the bathrooms, Veterans Park, um, did have a couple repairs that been inferred. Plumbing had to come in for, community parks bathrooms are ready to go. But we did not open those, waiting for a parks meeting to see what we wanna set for times, because that was designated with automatic timers on those bathrooms. We wanna see what we wanna do for times, so we'll take that to parks meeting. So, we'll talk about breaking, we'll get parts.
Next meeting is May seventeenth at one PM.
Is there, uh, you mentioned the, the river, or with the rainy season, you know, wet spring and stuff coming up, are, are we prepared, is the creek prepared for that?
So, the creek? Yeah, we did, uh, um, I did a walkthrough last Friday as well with Brian from Town and Country, and had Benans come in and start just getting a list together and trying to get some numbers on some things. Tried to contact Charles Unlimited, have not heard anything, if they would have any resources that they would wanna dump into as well. I know when we had the meeting in December, at that time, DNR did not seem like they had any funds, that they were willing to kick into it, so.
We, we grassroots this, is there, like, if we.
What's that?
We, like, grassroots this, if the, like, we got volunteers from within the village to come and clean up, would we be crossing barriers or anything?
So, Charles Unlimited was one of the, and so, Kim Perry from the Chambers, and I was really telling her, she's one that would be mainline contact for Charles Unlimited. They did say that they would, uh, they organize, you know, coming in and getting rid of woody, they said, the trees and stuff like that, that's to the extent of doing, I mean, obviously, as far as driving.
Just more hand, hand.
More hand cleaning, whatever else, which is definitely a positive.
Yeah.
Um, but she could definitely, I think Spear has that one, or at least get us some contact with the right people.
Get her contact?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, um, 'cause she has all the contact for those people she works for the whole time. That would be the first step, and then obviously, I think we just keep pursuing the DNR, same, you know?
If DNR doesn't wanna play nice, I mean, we could always go to her, the representatives, you know, through the state and that, and try to go above.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, when we met back in December, DNR was, you know, all well protected in the creek, which I understand. But when you go east towards Cross Plains, basically from Turbo Road, all the way through Cross Plains, it's been completely overhauled, rerouted and such. But here, we could not, you could not drop a bucket in the water, because it would disturb the, sort of, stuff side, or sediments in the water. So, it's just kind of a work in progress, so, monitoring it all the time.
That's, yeah, I mean, that's only so much we can do.
Yeah, yep.
Mitch, can I ask, if I, since you're timed, is that Park and Blue Mountains, is that you?
Uh, Canal Street and Blue Mountain Street, that would be, and at this time, there was, it wasn't an action item, it was just a discussion topic. Um, just kind of waiting to see from PD if we need to do any more extensive legwork, you know, if they want something or not, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Public Works?
Before we move on, I think I made a mistake, um, I introduced two or three months ago that our library director wouldn't be able to attend these meetings, she works regular shift. And if you recall, our library board president attends in her stead, and so, she, I was distracted with looking for her out there. He's reading her library director reports, just like every month prior to this, where Gary has attended. I know you don't list his name, but he's the one that is, been giving these reports every month. So, is it a possibility to back up, so that he can give the library director reports?
Gary, do you have something prepared?
I, I only have one thing to add, because you took all the good stuff.
All right.
Actually, you took most of the good stuff, but I have one really good stuff. I wanna thank Danny for all her help getting, um, Bailey's stuff in place and in progress and moving forward, so thank you for that, I very much appreciate it.
Does he?
She was very responsive and, boom, right there with the information to be given.
Thank you, Troy. All right, thank you, Gary. Anything else for Public Works? All right, six I, Police, um, Parks, Josh?
Yep, uh, we met in March, I believe it was March seventeenth, uh, we talked about, um, kind of a short meeting, just because of, um, things that are postponed. But basically, talked to Matt, still gonna continue to work with, uh, some local contractors to look at wrapping, um, concession posts, also the South Equitacia here at, uh, Vets Park. Um, big thing that we talked about was how to, what we wanna do for outfitting the kitchen down at the, uh, new shelter. So, Matt and I met down there last week, just took some measurements as far as what are some possibilities. So, that's gonna get relayed at the next Parks meeting, um, and then the parks can at least come back or decide what they wanna do, um, to help with that kitchen. There's been some discussions, we have home talent, uh, Ben Voss, as to what home talent looking to, uh, I guess, put into it, use, do whatever it may be, so. And then trying to coordinate with all the youth teams, too, youth softball, Little League, just, you know, the fact that we have it now, we wanna try to promote concession stand use, whatever it may be for, for Little League games, so. There's still some ups, ups and downs, trying to figure out how it would all work. One of the questions I did get from the softball club as far as, is a fee, I guess, what, you know, what we would charge? And I know it's past still the works, so it's something that I told them we would get back to them on, but they're trying to figure out a way out, you know? If we have to run this out every game, we're in a break-even point with her, you know, so. Um, and then, yeah, like Matt said, and as is, except, that was the majority of the conversation, so they're gonna come back, we're gonna look for some appliances. And then, um, there was a break-in at the, the, um, down the park, it was in the announcing booth, and I'll let Matt talk about that.
Yep, um, so, I got a Phil, or it's call from Phil, you guys all saw the email, um, went down, made some repairs, uh, and I talked to Cartman today. He got some video from the school, um, so Cartman is working with, uh, Sheriff's Office, obviously, just as far as seeing if we can get any more information on that. Just a CD player missing out of it, I'm guessing, I guess I can speculate what it is, but just broke a door down, the repairs were made to the door chain, so. Only other thing, we're parks, uh, trying to work with some of the local nurseries and see if we can get some pricing back on trees, you know? Get some of those trees established in some of our park's special parts, specifically spading versus just getting a, on the lawn ball, you know, planting it ourselves.
One tree was trimmed, too, right?
Was it? Yeah, a couple, two trees were trimmed, um, just to get some of the major limbs off, um, Vanguard just did what they could with what time allowed. Um, so, yeah, we'll be coming back at some point and taking care of what's left of both trees, you know, eventually getting the stumps out of there as well, reseeding, so.
Then the, uh, I guess the last thing was, Danny had emailed me last week, and we were, our next, uh, meeting was scheduled to be next Wednesday, twenty-first. And being that will be done, or myself, myself will be done, uh, we postponed it until the new employees can get in there, so. So, that, I can't say when the next meeting will be, but it'll be whenever the, my new chair decides, so.
I thought it was next Wednesday?
It's gonna be.
Or is it probably?
It was, it's supposed to be next Wednesday, but I'm not too, so when Danny asked, we postponed it, postponed it, got put on, and I said yes.
Um, just a question, uh, is it more cost, is it cost efficient to use Vanguard to take down our trees or trim them? Than is it just to hire somebody to come out?
Yeah.
We pay their electrical price.
Yeah, but it's part of the maintenance, I mean, it's money that's already budgeted from our maintenance for Vanguard. So, basically, they're already here doing maintenance, so either we're gonna have them out doing something else, or having them trim trees. I mean, if you want, I guess, we could look in the future on getting others to trim old.
I think that we need to just look at it a little bit.
Wouldn't hurt to look, we'll look at it, we'll, we'll bring that up during Public Works.
And then I have, um, one more thing, I forgot to call you, um, there is another globe broken at, uh, Veterans Park. Possibly the design was maybe not so great, it's broken from the top, so I don't know if a limb fell on it. It's the one that's closest to the tree that was removed by the tennis court.
Okay.
By the Bogdan.
Okay.
And that's broken at the top, so I don't, I don't know, I mean, I suppose Amanda could have thrown a rock up.
Oh, dropped it, yeah.
But then, it led me to think, you know, if kids are playing at the park, I'm wondering if, really, the balls that are flying through the air, and the glass globe on top is, is there some sort of a screen, you know, like in gymnasium? So, that when balls go up and hits the screen, are there screens that could be added to the top of the globe? Because I don't know how it was broken, but what if there's an air kick or something?
Yeah, I guess, it's something I think.
Is it?
Yeah, most, most of them are chatterproof resistant lines, but, I mean, you can check.
Yeah, this one smashed a bit, so I don't know, yeah. Maybe you could give us a update of what you feel might have happened, what.
Sure. Anything else for Parks?
Okay.
Good, all right, uh, six J, Police Committee, James?
Uh, we met March tenth. Two number reports, I don't actually have the numbers for February, but, uh, we had fourteen non-contract calls, which means when our police are on duty, that's, that's what the non-contract is. So, we're working them, which is higher than normal. They're helping with crossing guards, there's kids, there're more kids are going back to school now. There's no training coming up. Deputy Vinny brought up the light assortment court that, well, the courts were talking about, we brought to it, 'cause the area is pretty dark and it's hard to see. Took that to work, um, and the, the yield signs, they had an accident over there, which caused the, I have to ask for yield signs instead of, uh, the one stop, stop sign coming out of the parking lot, of the shoebox.
The one accident they had was actually not related to, it was just basically someone cut the corner, is what had happened, and.
That's what they brought to them.
Yeah, the next, the next one that Police, or Vinny had sent, she just about witnessed, like, said somebody crossing through, so.
So, they're wondering if they could stop sign of the yield signs?
Well, the one, the one that comes out of the parking lot.
There's currently one stop sign that comes out of the shoebox area.
Yeah.
Um, so, they were wondering about just putting two yield signs down there, it's kind of a funky, you know, when you park a lot, street corner, stuff like that, it's just kind of an awkward area. So, that was the reason to look into it.
Oh, you're talking about the space behind the shoebox?
Yep, yep. It comes down where the.
I know what you're talking about, yeah, okay.
We looked over the ATV ordinances and added there the police section of, uh, stuff. That was it, the next meeting is April fourteenth at five, yeah.
May?
May.
Yeah, May, no, it's April, yeah.
It's only April.
It's not April.
All right. All right, any questions for James?
Agenda item seven, discussion action regarding the board minutes of the March second, twenty twenty one personnel, uh, meeting and the personnel minutes from three thirty twenty one.
I'm making a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, uh, last board meeting, Tuesday, March second, if I have noted.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Jared, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, so we still need to approve the personnel meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve. I'll say it.
Motion by Mitch, second by Josh, discussion?
I have discussion, um, it, it says here that a personnel committee meeting, and when I agreed to go into closed session, I believed fully that we were discussing personnel and evaluations and raises. And the motion six B does show that it went off topic to discuss, um, the emails from me to the interim library director person, which was not part of the notice meeting. And that I in a way, I in a way approved going into this meeting. That was not posted. Properly.
Making a note, are you correcting the minutes, Mary, that you found?
I found it out there, since we're reviewing the minutes from it that I did ask for and didn't get until now, um, I'm pointing out that it was a closed session meeting to discuss personnel and raises, and it ended up being a discussion also of emails. And, um, since Jared had mentioned that things get pretty crazy and wild, I think if we get back to good order of business and close things properly, I think things might go a little bit more smoothly.
There seemed to be a complaint about somebody, we were having a good time to discuss it.
It's not.
No, no, there was a complaint about order, or about staff, as far as I understood, there was a complaint about trusting them. Anyways, all right, so.
Do you want to see if your name should be removed from the, your call vote?
That six B has nothing to do with.
So I'm going to approve the, um, the committee.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion?
Relation to both the meeting.
Call on favor? Aye. Oppose?
Motion passes.
Agenda item eight, discussion action treasures and financial reports, February twenty twenty one.
All right, um, your treasures report is through the month of February. And at this point, at the end of February, we're sitting with about two point six million in all of our accounts. All of our tax and jurisdictions are paid out for tax settlements at this point. And with, uh, other financial items, we're, the village is going to be expecting about a hundred and forty thousand to come to us from the American Rescue Plan and stimulus stuff that's coming. Plan is, is that half of it will be disbursed in this year, the other half next year. And criteria is still being established as to how the village will be able to use these funds. Uh, we do know that infrastructure uses will qualify, but again, the criteria is still being worked on as to how, and as soon as I get more information on that, I'm certainly sure of that. Um, audit wrapped up with field work in the month of February, and I'm expecting those reports by the end of May. We are still in a PSE billing audit that has not concluded yet. And as part of the workman's comp audit, the village will see a credit of about twelve hundred dollars, um, in our next, uh, billing cycle as a credit back to us from that audit, which is good. On your revenue and expense report, those are through March, and at March, we would expect to be about twenty five percent. In the general fund, our revenues and expenses are at seventeen percent. Um, general fund revenues won't reach that actual percentage until later in the year, when our quarterly transportation money starts filtering in. Majority of those will be seen in November. On the electric side, our revenues are about twenty four percent with expenses at nineteen percent. Water revenues are sitting at about twenty four percent with expenses at seventeen. Sewer revenues at twenty six percent with expenses at eight percent. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we're in a billing audit with the PSE. The other thing, the utility annual reports are being done and will be submitted to the Public Service Commission on the electric and water, uh, probably within the next couple of weeks. Um, we are, we were expected to go in for an electric rate case increase that was ordered out by the Public Service Commission. Technically, we should have had that in by March, but we were granted an extension. I filed for an extension with the audit and the discussion of the school was doing solar, and also the discussion of the substation for the electric. I asked for that extension to next year so we had time to evaluate all of that. They did grant that. Um, the other financial piece I'm going to mention is I have been working with Ellers on working to refinance our debt as part of our electric substation discussion and also to save these, and save our taxpayers some money, uh, principal and interest on that. So hopefully by next board meeting, I may have some information in front of you, um, as far as refinancing your village debt. There is my financial report.
All right, we can entertain a motion to approve such reports, set report.
So. I'll second, a motion by Mitch, second by Troy, to approve the treasure and financial reports, February twenty twenty one. Discussion on those reports? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Uh, agenda item nine, discussion action on invoices to be paid. Any questions on the bill? Our, our co-publatures, um, did that go up or am I just, I'm remembering what we, that we're going to say?
No, no, those, they should have done a pre-billing for a part of it, and then they have their annual support fees.
Oh, maybe a review?
Support fee is an annual expense that separates them from the constitution.
Okay, because the constitution was like around five grand or something.
Fifty or something, yeah.
I, I wouldn't take none of that, I only want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve invoices and include the extra library meeting pay, um, pending approval from the library board.
There's a date missing to offer that, April sixth, with the last minute closed session, whole board meeting, it did get added.
Oh, you wouldn't get, April was going to the next month.
Right, right.
Yep.
It's just so you know that this is, oh, wait, this is coming, okay, yeah, got it, thanks.
Motion by Mitch?
I'll second.
Second by Josh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll recuse myself.
Mary, opposed?
Motion passes.
Uh, agenda item ten, any other business can be brought before the board on future agendas?
Yes. Um, I, um, at the last meeting, I informed the board about Robert's rules of orders, having this twelfth edition that came out at the end of last year, and it includes electronic submissions. And I think that it, like I said before, it would be beneficial if each of the trustees would either have a copy that the village would sponsor for them to keep that's current, or have a loner available, have seven of them plus any of the office staff that needs it. Um, and then if they leave or turn over, that they would, that that copy would be the property of the village. That would keep them all financially responsible. But then, um, each trustee should know what Robert's rule says, and with these new electronic submissions, that's very important also.
Bill, I think you mentioned there are ordinance that probably need to be amended to include the electronic meeting?
Yeah, they, they, more than once we do, most papers are outdated, so, um, I, I mean, if that's something the board wanted to do, I can certainly, I can talk to you and draft something like that, I don't know.
Would the publication include any of that?
Um, I doubt.
Well, we can add it to, well.
Jared, what did you say? I didn't hear.
Not a publication?
Consecution.
Or publication, yeah, was that going to, uh, since we're already paying for that, you know, would that include adding that as an additional ordinance or offering it up there?
I say it was supposed to include anything we wanted to update and include.
Yeah, but it would, it would take an ordinance to do it, right?
Yes.
A resolution at least, right?
I think the other one was, we talked about needing to change because of state law changes, the intoxicant going out. That'd be licensing?
Yes, correct. Yeah, there are, there are several I can sort of talk to you about, they're, they're not urgent, but, you know, like all annual changes, they, you should update the code.
So a copy or are you, we'll discuss it at part?
Oh, you want that as an agenda item, right?
Yes, I thought we were on items to be brought forward on future agenda items. And I think it would be beneficial if each of the trustees would have their own copy.
So I'll make that a discussion topic on the next agenda.
When, uh, can you brief prices with that too, Mary?
Pricing?
Pricing.
Uh, can we get this through the library maybe, about rate pricing?
That'd be a question for your library director.
I would. Well, I'd inquire from the library director and possibly, yeah, I don't know how that would work, oh, it's.
Anything else?
It'd be nice to know cost when we discussed it, right?
From the library, but I think it should be our, I think it's ever.
Anything else for the next agenda item?
Yes, um, also, I think we should develop a social media policy and the ordinance minus fact include that and build that, that the recodification will have items like this that didn't appear prior. And I think that that's important, that there's responsibility amongst the trustees on social media as well, with their own thing.
I think our village handbook has a discussion on social media stuff, I don't know if that's what you're looking for.
And more in depth, that I think just along with the Robert's rules and I think just a little bit more on that. Maybe we could review that for updates, and since it's going to go through our ordinance, as they're going through a recodification, we might want to discuss that.
You, can we tell somebody how to behave personally on social media? I don't think we have.
Only when they're representing it.
Yeah, in an official capacity, sure, but on a personal account, we shouldn't have any.
Nope.
Any say in that.
Like if they're, oh, correct, yeah, there's First Amendment right for everyone, that's why we.
So you, you're saying, in, in an official capacity, social media?
If they're, if they're discussing their position as a village trustee or village president, and they are inappropriately contacting someone in a way that is threatening, that would be something that this social media, um, policy would drive.
Well, make this an agenda item, we're going to talk about it. Yeah, so, anything else?
Can I clarify, Mary, you want a social media policy ordinance to be discussed?
Well, the ordinances are one half of it, I think, Bill, did you say that?
I have to say that's a policy.
Social media would be discussed as part of the recodification or electronic submission?
No, I wouldn't make an ordinance for it, so she's talking.
There are several.
But that's nothing to do with Bill, that do with, you know, not.
So this would just be a policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
And then, um, village trustee brought up statute forty three point one eight, and I'm wondering if, and that is in regards to the library's participation with self-central library system. And I'm wondering if this, since it was discussed and everybody was included on the email, if this is something that we are willing to dive into, um, in response to his inquiry about whether people would be interested or encouraging, uh, village board trustees to look into statute forty three one eight, which would either the self-central library system remove our libraries from their system, which they're not talking about, or as he suggested, it would be removed, we would, by two-thirds vote, remove our library, which would remove financing, which would make the village subject to library tax. Is this something that he wants to put on the agenda because it was put in an email?
Do you want it on the agenda, Mary?
I think we need to discuss it, if it was put out there, it was addressed to me, but put out for everybody.
Anything else for the agenda?
Is that a yes on that thing?
Well, on the agenda, that's what you made a motion for, right?
All right, uh, agenda item eleven, meeting announcements, so it needs to be, uh, organizational meeting. In what, week or two?
Well, by statute, as long as it's done by our next regular board meeting, which is May fourth.
So we could do it before the board meeting on May fourth, is what I'm suggesting.
And do you have information, does some of that has to be meeting?
Yeah.
Some homework or?
I do, thank you for asking. What is it, is it, is it possible?
Yeah.
It's right before the village.
Time, so six o'clock?
Well.
Do we want to do it before the board meeting or?
Yeah, before the board meeting, it has to be done before the board.
Nope.
I do need to give it to you.
So do it by six and then close it on the back, yeah, that way we don't.
And I don't need to give it to you.
Keep going.
Six o'clock, Sarah.
So then the board meeting?
All right, so what this is, is you have a blank form, and on the, behind it is the current committee assignment.
Why is the blank on only one page?
Who signed it?
Well, I have. Oh, it's on the other side, that's fantastic.
That always happens.
It's only part of it.
All right, well.
This is the first.
It's missing it.
Yeah, this is okay.
Oh, hi, I sent it to you electronically, how's that, will that work?
No, it won't work.
No.
No.
You want to, I'm saying, I don't have a printer at home, I already did it in my pocket.
My loss, I just.
All right, I'll get it for you, I've always promised you crazy. So I think you'll have some homework assignments, um, Mitch, how do you want to direct this?
I think we'll probably get them back, we've got to have time to look them over and stuff, um, what do you think, twenty third, twenty? Twenty third of April, maybe, we can get them back by?
Specifically, what we've done in the past is put down your top five choices. Not that all top five, you will not probably sit on all top five, but if you give those back by, what, April twenty third?
Yep.
To me or you or?
Well, I, once you give them to you, then you can scan them and email.
Okay, those will then, of course, go to Mitch, and he will take a look at that for committee designers. So by the time we get to the organizational meeting, everybody should, uh, kind of have a spot in there, so. Due date, yeah.
Should they go to me if they're not?
Yeah, well, yeah, let's check my email.
Okay.
Okay.
We're not going to bind this in with the village board meeting then?
Yeah, we're going to do it before the board meeting, so we don't have two meetings.
So earlier than six or?
No, we'll do it at six, and then the board meeting will follow right after the organizational.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, um, also, you want to, you got the copy of that resume that you made for me?
I do.
This is a person I, I would like to consider for my spot, um.
I'm going to go back around.
So I've got her resume for you guys, um, to review because I would like to appoint her at the next board meeting. Very even-keeled person, um, hasn't been part of anything, past board experience years ago. Hasn't been part of anything, bring a new light to this. Heck, you've probably even served with her, Scott, no?
Mm-hmm, I need to get a chance to try it, yeah.
Any other meeting announcements? All right, and, and twelve? I'll second. Hi, where's Aaron, seven, three?
Josh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm taking credit.
Thank you all for working with us.
Thanks, Josh, appreciate it.